Village of Weston Board of Trustees to order. We can all stand and pledge allegiance in flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the national state square, and to the Republic for which this advance one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Welcome. Good. Have a roll call, please.
Maloney.
Aaron.
Cronin.
Here.
Fermally.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Pinsonal.
Present.
Uh, Wyland is excused. Sagami.
Here.
Good. Thank you. Um, did you adjust the volume again?
It's it's the same.
It seems better. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, public comments. Um, any public comments from the crowd? Massive crowd? Or anybody online? No? Any public comments? Third time, any public comments? Hearing none, moving on to public hearing. Let's see, for open public hearing on the FY two zero two five budget. Um, let's see. There is now open presentation on the two thousand twenty five budget. Why don't I know what FY means?
Fiscal year.
Jeez, Mark. I had to ask because I if if I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed. So fiscal year, yes. Go ahead.
Okay, so today we're adopting our twenty twenty five budget for the general operating fund and all the other funds. Um, in front of you on screens is the public hearing notice that was in the Daily Herald. Um, a couple of weeks ago, it is unchanged from when we talked about the budget last. So total expenditure increase is two point four eight percent along with our total revenue increase, two point four eight percent. Um, this slide shows all the other funds levies. Um, general fund, debt service, special revenue, capital projects and enterprise. The whole operating levy budget is seven million eight hundred thousand six hundred thirty three. Our TIF increment is at six million eight hundred eighty five thousand. We did get final numbers on Friday from the county. And that number will be going up. So when we print out the budget status reports during twenty twenty five, you're gonna see the budget numbers a little bit lower than what is actually coming in.
Okay.
It's just a timing issue. We don't get all the numbers right away. So the total proposed levy increase is three hundred thirty four thousand five hundred eighty five dollars. A hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, six hundred and six is in the general fund. Debt service is two hundred ninety two thousand, two hundred forty five. And the capital projects fund is a reduction of ninety three thousand, three hundred and twenty six. So that gives us the total of three thirty four, five eighty five. As I was stuck to the finance, um. The reason for the increase in the general fund of one thirty five is because we are no longer receiving the Weston Power Plant Funds from the Village of Rothschild in twenty twenty five. So what we did was we removed the ninety three thousand that was levied for capital. And we moved that to operations. So if you look at our levy limit worksheet, the total change in operating levy is only forty two thousand dollars. This sheet here, it shows the levy by fund. Um. General fund is at five point six million. Debt service is at two point one. And then our pool is at forty thousand dollars. Tax rate right now with the final numbers in, we're estimating approximately five dollars and eighty nine cents. We do, that is for the village only. Next page. Okay, this is includes all the other taxing jurisdictions. Right now, we are estimating the total tax levy as sixteen dollars and three cents. We did not get the state school credit yet, so that number is estimated. Um, so this number will change as soon as we get the um, school tax credit out from the county. As you will notice, it's a significant decrease from last year, and that is because of the reassessment we had. Give you examples, so because we can't normally do it with a house worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the change weight because of the reassessment. So I I have a house up there, looked at the property tax bill. In twenty twenty three, this house was assessed at a hundred and fifty seven thousand. Their tax bill was three thousand, five seventy eight. This year, I looked at that same property, their assessed value went up to two hundred and forty one thousand. Their estimated tax for twenty four is at three thousand, eight seventy four. So it's an increase of about two hundred ninety five dollars. Um, to get an idea of a different house, I looked at their oldest asset value was two hundred and sixty six thousand. The new one is four hundred and five, and they're gonna see an increase of approximately three hundred and forty four dollars. The other ones, my parents.
No, not could be. No, that's it.
No, it could be a little less depending on how that school, how the credits come in.
Credits come in, yeah. Okay.
I had to pick two different values, one's my parents, one is Mark's. The people.
You said that number, then you hit the next number. Whoa, 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 that's very close. I'm gonna hear this now. Wow.
Uh, general fund revenues, I can see approximately fifty nine percent of our total revenue that we bring into the village comes from property taxes. Um, the second is from intergovernmental revenues, which includes our shared revenue and general transportation aid from the state. Expenditures fifty two percent goes to public safety, which includes our Mountain Bay Metro, Safer Fire District, and our building inspection department. Yeah, the the next highest is street department at twenty nine percent, twenty four percent. And the final slide, where do your tax dollars go? So what I did is I took a assessed value home of approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We determined that the villages' portion of their tax bill is one thousand, four hundred and seventy four dollars. Approximately a hundred and twenty two eighty five a month. We broke that out between the general debt service and pool, and then we broke it out even further amongst all the departments. It's a really good idea of how much it costs on a monthly basis for you to live in the village and get all the services that we provide. Is there any questions on any of that?
Jim?
My pool, you physically mean the swimming pool, right?
It's that forty thousand that comes out of tourism, right?
Yeah, we do forty thousand goes to the Aquatics Center. That does not cover the full cost. Um, we have park employees who, when they do work at the pool, their time actually goes to the park um, in the general fund, because we don't have enough revenues in that fund. We allocate as much as we can, but it doesn't cover the full cost of running a pool.
And that forty thousand is out of our, the first thirty that we can do anything with, right?
So we have forty thousand of tax levy, and we have forty thousand dollars coming from room tax. So a total of eighty thousand dollars of what I put tax dollars go to the pool.
This graph only represents levy?
Yes, this only.
So like utility isn't included. This only represents the levy?
And I beg you to have this on the computer next day. Please. Okay. I always gotta bring my focal, my my glasses in. Okay.
Oh, okay, I see that. Even with my glasses, okay.
It it just might be nice to be, I know, I know it's done up to the last minute, but if we just dumped it on our computers, maybe even a whole other group, then we could look at that. And I'm sure it's hard for the public, too.
We could um, just ask Song if she could email it to them tomorrow, too.
Thank you. Okay, any more comments? No more? Anybody? Nope, okay. Close the public hearing. Action on hearing. Uh, resolution number two zero two four dash zero two three, resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty five operating budget of the Village of Weston. You want to do them together?
Sure.
Resolution number two thousand twenty four dash zero two four, resolution adopting its depth service, special revenue, capital projects, and proprietary funds of two thousand twenty five projects. What's your pleasure?
Motion.
Motion approved by Fermally.
Second.
Second by Cronin. On the discussion. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Thank you. Uh, minutes from previous meetings, nine, approval of October twenty ninth, twenty first, excuse me, two thousand twenty four Board of Trustees meeting.
Hope they approve, uh, approve October twenty one Board of Trustees meeting minutes as presented.
Uh, motion by Pinsonals. To approve. Second by, second by Fermally. Uh, anything on the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Uh, let's see, acknowledge reports, minutes from boards, committees, and commissions.
Move to acknowledge items number ten, twelve, fourteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty one.
Motion by Cronin. Second by Pinsonal. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Acknowledge reports from departments. Twenty three administrator. Anything left to add?
Um, the only thing I would just point out, and I did highlight in my report, is that there are currently two openings on the Finance and Human Resources Committee. One of them, um, Robin will stay with us through the end of the year, but if you know of anyone that would be interested, posted on our website, on our Facebook page, and it's in our weekly newsletter. So just highly encourage if you know a resident that would have an interest in that committee.
Okay. Um, possibly anybody that um, that went for the trustee position?
Yeah, I did send some personal emails, but um, I think it's always helpful if people, if if you suggest to people, they would be a good fit.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, yes, Jim.
Um, two things we maybe didn't hear back from yet. Um, I think there's a village attorney referral or recommendation from the last meeting uh, about the landscaping upfront. I just wanted to make it uh, any update from that one?
I don't have any updates from that one. I did note in there um, our conversation with Revi about the additional uh, overlay. Um, that conversation continues, but I will need to follow up with Attorney Edie further on if there's anything regarding our first or our original contract that we could do.
With Myron.
With Myron.
And then on the same flavor with the the delays up right away.
Yes, yeah, Michael's been following up on that one.
So that's moving forward. We'll get that.
Like what?
Yes, we're trying to, so the state of Wisconsin has a special provision on state highways where they can essentially, they have to give a timeline to utility companies to move their facilities out of the state's way when they rebuild a highway.
Okay.
So um, we're trying to see if we can mimic that on the municipal level as well.
Yep, okay. Tier did get their stuff correct.
Eventually, yes.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, twenty four clerk.
Um, there's only one thing that I wanted to add that I didn't have in my report, and that is, again, that uh, the nomination papers can be taken out as of December first. While they could, if you wanted them beforehand, you could have them, but you can't obtain signatures until December first. And there are three trustee positions and village president that are going to be um, on the ballot in the spring.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions? Uh, finance.
Uh, nothing more to add unless you have questions.
Okay. Uh, firing us, chief.
I have two quick things other than my report. Um, we had a structure fire last Tuesday on Sternberg in one of the apartment buildings. Um, just wanted to mention that. And then um, we're gonna be uh, looks like we're gonna be hiring some volunteer firefighters. Um, so if anybody knows of anybody, I did, I know Jamie had asked me to make some brochures, and I did, but I forgot them on my desk today. Um, so I'll get those over here if anybody uh, wants to hand them out. Um, so if anybody, if you know anybody that's interested in being a volunteer, just uh, they can go to a website and apply.
Is there a difference between volunteer and paid on call?
Uh, paid on calls work regular shifts. Volunteers respond from home or from work.
I thought the, e- even though I'm not on Facebook, but somebody sent it to me, I thought it said paid on call.
Hey, it's paid per call.
Oh, per call, okay.
So when they come in for.
Then it's volunteer. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is on our website and will be in our weekly newsletter, Facebook, etc. And I know Rip Mountain is doing the same.
Yep. Any question, chief? All right, park and rec. Yeah, sorry, excuse me. Am I supposed to say cultural and rec?
No, park and rec is fine.
Park and rec is fine. Okay, I go ahead.
So I did have a report in the packet. Um, just one thing to clarify for people if they see it. So if you drive Mesker and right behind the current fire department, um, there's a sign on Mesker on Mountain Bay that says Memorial Trail in memory of Jason Elliott. It's only for the Snowmobile Trail. It's not for the Mountain Bay Trail. Um, that was Dale and Joyce's son.
Yes.
Um, so I got a call today and just wanna clarify that that is just for the Snowmobile Trail itself.
So it's just, it's being set up seasonally only?
Yes, and it, and it, so if you drive down Mesker and you see it on the east side, it's right, you know, behind the fire department, just for clarification if anybody sees it, or if they renamed the Mountain Bay Trail. They did not. It's brand new. You'll see it.
So it'll it'll come down as a season.
Now and.
And go back up.
Yeah.
So for you, for some that don't know, they lost their son. He was coming back from a bowling tournament and had a car accident, um, probably thirty years ago.
Yeah.
Twenty five, yeah.
At least.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. I'm I'm sure some people will be asking about that. I'm sorry, Jim?
Um, with the, uh, just looking for clarification, so there was some talk about the the concrete trashcans at the parks and then adding like the, what do they call them, carts? The dumpsters, right? So I see there's dumpsters and there's concrete. Are we gonna get rid of the concrete? Or are we gonna have both?
No, so the concrete recycle bins remain at all parks. Um, based on the numbers that Waste Management had versus us, they thought we still had the plastic recycle bins, which we did not. So we literally turned those in, I think, two months after we started the contract, just because they were getting contaminated with garbage. Um, so they actually fried us with additional garbage cans. Um, and then we added some additional at Kennedy late all this fall, uh, just due to that. But we also have the concrete ones that are still in place.
So concrete is just for recyclables?
Yep.
And and the carts are for trash?
Carts are for trash, yep.
Okay. Uh, anymore for park and rec? Okay, uh, plan development.
I don't have anything that you need to add.
And then AA refuse and recycling? Okay.
Um, yes, I have my report in the packet, and one thing I was wanting to get any comments on is that the information I provided about the COM two business, that um, I think they've sent, I think they sent out mass emails to like all the clerks and all the like boards and stuff regarding setting up free recycling events. And um, so Jen and I did meet with them virtually. And um, and I've talked to the state about it, too, just to make sure everything was all legitimate, but yeah, that's, they basically would offer us a, so just to back up with recycle that stuff dot com, which they're awesome to work with. Um, we pay them, I think it was like five seventy five the last time we held one. And that's just like their standard rate, just to have their staff on hand here. And then um, and then residents or whoever comes to dress up off pays a certain amount for like TVs and things like that. So with these guys, with COM two, it would be completely free to the Village of Weston, and it'd be completely free to people bringing the stuff in, like TVs and all that.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, apparently there's um, they get some kind of a, I don't wanna call it a kickback, but they get some incentives from the manufacturers when they bring the materials, when they get their materials to the Wisconsin manufacturers. Because I think the manufacturers get grants from the state, and so they all gonna work hand in hand. And so if you, so and I would, I'd be totally open to doing this. I was just curious on your thoughts, like, I wouldn't wanna recreate or have again what happened years ago when Cellcom had their event behind the Municipal Center. Well, we had theaters backed up for about a mile each way on Spopolev. Um, so we probably, if we did this, we had to limit it either to um, like Weston residents um, or just like the Weston community, but nobody outside of Weston.
Would you think we would actually check IDs?
I'm sorry?
Would we actually check IDs? Or just, would that be enough of a, uh, not a scare, but enough to to, okay, I'm not gonna try to come if I'm from somewhere else?
Generally, because like right now with the recycle that stuff dot com, just because we're just paying that flat fee, we open up to anybody. And I still have a lot of people that they pull up. I was, I was there and I greet everybody that comes.
Right.
And they were showing me their ID, and it's like, you don't have to show me your ID.
Okay.
And so I think we have a huge issue, and I would, I would probably be checking each one if we, if we limited to that.
Yeah. And then COM two, so that's a new event?
It's a, it's a, they um, I'm not sure if they're a new business, but they've got, so they're based on Illinois, but they have a location and it's been on many calls.
Okay, that was my question, whether it was, that's pretty local to be in Illinois. So and then would, would, so this would be the third one of the year? Or would this, would this be?
I would think it would just replace.
Oh.
What we do.
Okay, because it might be confusing if this one is free and then our other ones are, okay.
I was just, I was just supposed to break.
Yeah.
These guys and do two of them.
And two are here, okay. Does the village pay for the other service we're using right now?
For the recycle that stuff that come, yeah, we pay.
We do five seventy.
Their service, we just have their staff on.
Right, so five seventy five, and then plus the residents pay a fee for, depending on what the item is.
What they do, yeah.
Yeah.
Not everything that um, that was accepted through recycle that stuff, recycle that stuff that come would be accepted here, because these guys are following the East Cycle Wisconsin program where there's like just certain electronics that they're trying to keep out of the landfill. Um, but people would still have the option to take all the other stuff to like Giger Auto Salvage, most likely for free.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we've had, we've already had them here at the Municipal Center, right?
Not this group.
No, okay.
But they were single that stuff that come, yeah, we have them.
Okay, and it hasn't been too wild, right?
No, the first year we did it here, it was a little backed up, but then we started, we started a false like half hour early start time. Or we didn't advertise it because people start lining up an hour before the event starts. And then this week, it started getting them through and there's less of a line.
And if there, if there is a line and they're waiting, it's not like the election, we're waiting outside in the rain. They'd be in their car.
Yeah, be in their vehicle.
Sorry. I just think a little bit more rope line, you know, just a little. I thought the elections went great. I'm getting a few people saying they waited in the rain. Then Pam must have too, if you were the last one. Or did they quit raining by then?
I'm sorry.
A long subject, that's okay. So you're just staring at me, you're not listening.
That's true.
She's staring at me, but she's not listening. Oh, okay.
When the water gets further around the edge.
I know, okay. So I know that. Thank you. Okay.
And then I was just, also, we've updated, um, so what they have grabbed to put in here is that our America was local state event we have right now.
Mm-hmm.
Where Weston residents can, they email me or they can draw a post, they don't have access to email pictures of their recyclables, their recycling bin.
Mm-hmm.
And then they get the names put in to uh, win a prize at the end of this.
Mm-hmm.
And um, I'm up to, I think I'm up to seventeen people now, which has actually been, you'd think by advertising this, you'd think I'd get hundreds of submissions, but this is actually probably the most I've had so far of all the years we've done.
Seventeen, yeah, okay.
But yeah, so the county, they donate a fifty five inch TV. Uh, and then we usually buy like five twenty five dollar gift cards to local businesses here, and then we draw names at the end of the event for a quick screening.
Okay.
Um, and then up to more quick things, um, I'll be working on the proposal for our contract, which is basically our caller contract, um, which is up at the end of next year. And so the goal is to start getting something drafted now, um, so we can start getting proposals there before then, so not rushing at the end of the year. And then the other one is I'll be working on my accepting guidelines. Um, and so something to keep in mind with the proposal, though, is if you do something that you want, you think we would wanna change for this one? Like, to me personally, I think I'm gonna, I'd like to see a requirement here that we have to provide a local phone number and no more user number. Because I I think in all the time that they've had that, I think I've maybe had one phone call where somebody wasn't upset, and they tried calling that eight hundred number. Because you just get the runaround and they get on hold for half hour and then.
Well, that's by design. I mean, I'm trying to call the post office, same thing. You can't get them. You have to have somebody inside to get you that number.
Yeah, so usually what I do, um, because I'm not supposed to give out their local number, but sometimes I just do anyway. Or what I'll do is I'll get the president's email address, and I'll send an email to Waste Management, and then when they're stacking emails back, their local phone number's right in the email. And then technically, they're giving it out. And so, but if there's anything that you guys would like to see changed in the, in the contract, I'd be interested to know. You can let me know over the next few weeks or so.
Well, the last time I called, uh, the the first thing she sent me, did Valerie give you this number? I go, no, no, I'm just teasing. She doesn't. I will tell you, though, and Valerie, you know, I've called you several times on different issues over the years, not, not all in a month. But when, when you do get ahold of them, they take care of it.
Oh, they.
They really do, and it's really fast. And uh, the last note that's, I think you sent out on um, Halloween, that was, that was, when I heard that, I thought, that's great. That's exactly why all of our garbage had to get picked up, because the kids were out on the streets.
Oh, yeah.
So that made total sense, you know. I I know Wu Sheng's neighborhood and ours, and yeah.
Yeah, they're kind of almost that.
Yeah, yeah. Steve, did you, or Jim, did you have something? Sorry.
You tipped it, yeah.
No, yeah, I do.
Last month, dude, all right. Um, so I just had a couple, I I think it's great with COM two thing. I think you should do however you do it, whenever you schedule it, if you replace it with the East Cycle with the, yeah, I think that's good. Um, and then on the the plan development one. Um, Stillwater, is their, their project is done, and they meet the timeline, all their stuff is good.
Who, who we addressing it to?
Jennifer. Oh, Stillwater, I'm ending.
Oh, planning.
I can give you an update at the next meeting. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
The road is paved.
Yeah, I saw that.
I was gonna say, I drove, I drove through there this weekend, and uh, it was a big improve. It's like, there's still work to be done, but.
Yeah, yeah.
And the the raise and repair thing, we're just, we really just can't find out how to contact these people, right? Is that what the thing is? Like, we're waiting on the title company to.
I got the title company information back late last week, so I just need to sit down with Roman, and we just have to.
Is this Aspen Street?
Yes, okay.
Yeah. It took a few weeks for our uncle to get it to me. And so we'll just work on the raise and repair order.
And then um, I see something in your report about the, I don't know, Evolve two point oh, or whatever we are, Cloud Works, Cloud, something.
Cloud Permit?
Sure, starting January one. I thought we were starting December one.
Little gold live for everybody.
What?
It was pretty.
The building permit portion is scheduled to be finished by December uh, third. Following planet will, planning will follow that, so it's kind of staggered. But I think the, I know, based off that direction, that the main concern was having everything ready so we could shut Evolve off. Well, they've been informed, and they've delivered sample data, um, so we're working on trying to get that import right now.
Yeah, so what is it? So the motion made on October seventh was to approve the implement start date of December one, twenty twenty four. With all permits, provides software services, planning permitting inspections, licensing code enforcement, as well as an online portal for customer care. So it won't be done by December one?
N- not all of it, no. I mean, we, I mean, we, we can tell Cloud Permit or whoever we're working with that, that was the date put forward, but we can't, you know, they, they only have so much time in their schedule as well, so they couldn't meet that exact deadline.
A portion, but not all.
Right.
But the building permits will be live on the third?
Yes, that is the, according to the schedule, no.
Jim, just, the first is a Sunday, too. So you're.
Yeah, well, you mean the motion, I don't know. I I think the intent was, okay, December second, and that's fine. But January one to December second are like about thirty days apart, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so when does Evolve turn off?
January first.
My only concern here is if we turn the one on January one and you turn the other one off, January one, good luck. Not gonna work.
Can we have them both running at the same time?
Why not?
Yeah, well, that, no, that's.
But we can.
The building permit portion uh, plan is scheduled to start in December, so we have that going while we move through. Um, it definitely will not be like, anytime you go through a software migration, there's bumps on the road, and we're expecting that. Um, so we're, we're doing our best right now to make sure that the bumps are fairly minimal.
And then um, our Evolve contract ends December thirty one, twenty four.
Yes.
And.
They've, they've been informed, they've already sent uh, information to accounts uh, receivable that contract.
Even though we won't meet the December one timeline, as directed by the board, there will be no interruption of service for residents of the Village of Weston on any front in the transfer to cloud permits.
We, we are doing our best to figure out the, that the residents and most people will not be affected. So, so I mean, I, I just, I I know you're trying to make a point here, but so we, we declared as a board December one without talking to them. You know, so then we went, then we went and talked to them, and they said, no.
We have that whole.
We'll do the best we can.
Share with you. We're meeting with them weekly.
I, I, I'm, I'm just saying that what we, we can't just indiscriminately say December first if they can't do it. That's what I. I, I, I'm, I'm just saying that what we, we can't just indiscriminately say December first if they can't do it, that's what I'm seeing. And so they, they, they can do a, a part of it, but not all of it, by the, by that.
We're not gonna have the code enforcement.
I asked that question though, in that meeting, and I said, this timeline is not too accelerated, it won't be an issue, oh no, it won't be an issue, very well. Now it sounds like it is an issue, so.
Uh twenty-nine, please.
So a report in your packet, we had just over twenty-one hundred calls for the month. Uh kinda interesting when you start looking at some of the numbers, um, so total for the Village of Weston, there was a hundred and twenty traffic citations that were issued for the month. Um, in addition to that, we have a new employee that started in the municipal court today, so we have a part-time employee. So we're still trying to go through some of the old citations that came over during the merger time. Um, the vehicles that are parked outside the old police department, I wanted them out before the snow was flying. But they'll be out of there by December, so.
They're, they're now outside.
No, there's some that have been outside for twenty years. And they will be out of there, so that, that stuff that's been sitting around outside there for twenty.
I know what you're talking.
Yeah, okay, so, um, we found all the paperwork on it, so we'll be disposing of that, so I'm trying to clean that place up over there, so we don't have a bunch of. Stuff sitting there. So I'm a little behind on my quarterly reports, so uh, next meeting you'll have a quarterly report from this last quarter, so. Questions?
Um, I don't know when you're gonna be at Rothschild or see Captain Aldridge, but maybe he can take that, okay, thanks.
And uh, I have a contest here with Jen, she's kinda losing on the sign pickup here, but, so. Pretty proud of that, picking up all those signs that are in there right away, so.
Sounds good.
We should have a contest next year.
Uh thirty, Public Works, Michael.
Just as of about four o'clock today, Weston Ave between Alderson and Birch is open to through traffic, line painting was done today. It got paved on Saturday, then um, East Jellicle and Von Kennel were paved today, so those are now uh. I guess more or less back open, they were putting up uh, street signs, stop signs, those items yet today, but. Haven't got down, so, yay.
Worried, they busted though the last few days.
Somebody had commented to me, boy, you guys are lucky, normally the plants are closed down. Yes, we're just taking the way it was.
Thank you, thirty-one, uh, Nate?
I don't have any dead to report.
Okay, alright, uh, motion to acknowledge?
Motion to acknowledge twenty-three through thirty-one concurrently.
Motion by uh, to acknowledge by Pincinel. Second by Ermeling, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Do you have something on agenda? No, okay, otherwise I'd move to that for you, so you wouldn't have to listen to this all night. Thank you, but some are very, you know, what that one on here, yeah.
Her part, did we make a motion of that?
Yes, right? Oh, yeah, if we acknowledged it, then we did, yeah, 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 and I, we all said, yes, absolutely, yeah, as far as saying yes to that? Do you think we need a motion on that, or by accepting? Yeah, we're fine, yeah, I'm good.
And the agreement to move forward, yep.
Okay.
Better service and a cost saving, it's done.
Yeah, yep.
My concern is, I think it should be just for Village of Weston. Because you get too big and you have a difficulty to handle it, so each means part of it.
You, you know, if, 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 like you said that one time when the lines are so big, and then you gotta start looking, then you gotta start looking. But I um, what, I might wanna call Chief Hunt over there, then you're gonna start telling people to pull out of line.
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty scary going to do that then last time.
I, I, I would believe it. Okay, uh, thank you, uh, work product transmittals, uh, acknowledge October building permits, acknowledge October code enforcement report. Acknowledge uh, October budget status, can we do them all at once?
We'll do acknowledge thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four.
Uh, now it's thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four by Pincinel, second by Ermeling, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, consent agenda, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
Motion to approve thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight by Ermeling, second by Zagami. Uh, or was it Conan? Zagami, yep, on the question, any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, um, just, you know, I, Cheryl, I saw the Cheryl Corporation on here, and I'm not. I don't know which one that store is out there, but uh, if, if you've seen ten or fifteen or twenty Amazon vans fueling there. Uh, almost on a daily basis, it's pretty wild, yeah. So, that's pretty cool. Uh, ordinances, uh, forty, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one nine, and ordinance amending chapter ten, animals of the municipal code. For the Village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin, what's your pleasure?
To approve ordinance twenty-four zero one niner as presented.
A motion to approve by Pincinel.
A second.
Second by Conan, any on the discussion?
Just have to say that lions, tires, and bears are no longer permitted.
I, and I read that, I, I, I had a smile on my face the whole way through, and I'm thinking, God, there's gotta be another animal that's, that's not, that I could get out here. I, I am gonna, if, if this is discussion right now, I, I do have my hand up, I won't tell anybody when I do it, but I used to have piranha several times. And you're, you're saying no to piranha, so, I mean, I had a piranha in a fifty-five gallon tank, I thought they were cool, my wife made me get rid of them, but uh. Anyway, so, yeah, the goldfish didn't like them, you know, so. Every Saturday, alright, so uh, what, do we have a motion, a second? Yes, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
So carried, sorry about the commentary, forty-one, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero two zero, an ordinance to approve the rezoning. Of a plus or minus eight point two five acres vacant property located directly east of sixteen. Uh, one six three four oh one Towson Way from RR dash five, rural residential, uh, less than five acres. To rural, to RR dash two rural residential, less than two acres.
Motion to approve ordinance number two four zero two zero.
Motion to approve by Conan.
Second.
Second by Pincinel, anything on the, on the discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, uh, resolutions, unfinished business. Resolution two zero two four dash zero two two, a resolution amending the village fee schedule. That's it, I was gonna go into forty-three. Motion to approve by Ermeling. Second by Zagami, on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, forty-three, discussion and or action on recommendation of the plan commission. To amend the site plan and TIF development agreement for revised landscaping plan for ABC Weston LLC. Thirty-two hundred Schofield Avenue, project number two zero two three zero zero eight five.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Conan.
Second.
Second by Pincinel, on the discussion, Jim?
Clarify this, then they will get the balance of that funding, right?
Yes.
The, the original motion was for half, or they won't have a landscape in yet, probably cuz it's number eighteen.
Think it meets zoning as it is now, correct?
They had, they had a couple changes, and I think they were making those changes.
He was gonna try to get them done, I'll have to follow up with him, I don't know if they got them installed yet.
Those couple changes bring them into compliance.
Moving forward, but they're second building, so it's gonna have to get done pretty quick.
It's true.
Yeah, they are coming for the second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, forty-four, discussion and or action on recommendation of the plan commission to amend. The site plan and TIF development agreement for a multi-tenant commercial development at thirty, twenty-three zero two. Schofield Avenue Lock redevelopment project two zero two four zero one one zero.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Conan.
Second.
Second by. Jordan, yeah, wow, it's the first time I said that, right? That's awesome, I'll get it from now on, I, trust me, Joe. Any more on the discussion? None, alright, uh, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, what, I'm sorry, did you have something?
In here said to amend the development agreement. We just saying move to approve, is that alright?
Yep, you're approving the amendment, that's okay.
Yeah. Okay, sure, all good, so that, that was, yes.
Can we bump item number forty-five down, I'm trying to, just send it to Gary, text him, I don't know where they are, so we'll see if he can land mine.
So Gary would like to be here for whatever discussion is gonna happen with forty-five, so with the board's uh, agreement, we'll move forty-five to the end. Is it okay? Or whenever he gets here, fine, okay, new business, forty-six, discussion and or action on recommendation of the plan commission. To amend the site plan and TIF development agreement for architectural approval for building two for ABC Weston LLC. Thirty-two oh two Schofield Avenue Project, two zero two three zero zero eight five. Move new approve by Conan.
No second.
Second by Jordan, got it right away, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, forty-seven, discussion and or action on Friends of Kennedy Park fundraising memorandum of understanding. Motion to approve by Ermeling. Second by Zagami, on the discussion, Jim?
Uh, on page two seventy-two, paragraph five. In the words, the board of trustees be inserted after the word administrator. This is referring to the reporting that.
You want it to be submitted to the.
Administrator and the board.
And the board of trustees.
Correct.
What, what, what line are we on?
Number, item number five, at the end of number five, and what I can probably do is. Either myself or Sean can attach it to our report, so it would just be part of the packet.
Okay. Anymore? Nope, uh, let's see, with no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Forty-eight, discussion and or action on pickleball courts location.
I asked for that on the agenda. Remember, you asked me to look at the Kennedy Park, and I did that, the only thing we can do at Kennedy Parks to purchase that property. Then, the property is only less than a half acre, just about. But to the west of it, there is enough land and there, develop those, but we need the retaining wall. For the creek and the lemon area, I think it becomes.
Yeah, I, I, and the more I talk to people, I, I've just been asking people, anybody I know, my neighbors. And they say the noise level of a pickleball court, and, and I've heard them occasionally. But I guess it's, it's, it definitely transfers, and it's not just that corner, it would transfer across, but I'm thinking, okay, what about a baseball game, what about the aquatic center? But that pickleball might be a tad more annoying, you know, so.
They, recommend at least five hundred feet away.
Oh, okay.
From the property.
Okay.
So, but also I look at the. Uh, Yellow Bank. At Yellow Bank, we can still implement it there, we have to decrease the number of the courts. Possible to fourteen or twelve one, but it is possible to do it there.
Where would it be, just uh, uh, between the two playgrounds equipments, or on, over to the west or?
On the. Uh, south side of it.
Oh, okay, there, okay, okay.
Yeah, that area is clear, it'd be border Joe property and.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
And then um, and then parking would have to be expanded, I would think, yeah.
Parking, we know, we, we don't, we have room for additional parking, yes.
And perhaps it would be a brand new build, cuz I know that was in that survey, and then Mac Miller was in that survey too. Okay.
I would be in favor of either Yellow Banks or Mac Miller.
Yeah, I, I guess I would, after all the talking I've done, I think I would too, anybody else?
Yeah, the corp and the. The corp says Mac Miller, and the Kennedy Parks multiple times, and they said Mac Miller.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've had some conversation with Wu Shang and um, Yellow Banks. We can make it fit, but the reality, as I thought about it, is if we already have the infrastructure at Mac Miller. It would just make more sense not to add on to the uh, infrastructure. More, not that the disc golf guys wouldn't like to have a building there too, but they're a really small.
I, I went to Yellow Banks, and, and with your same thought, I, I think it's gonna be tight, it's, it's not gonna be improvable, you can't grow it. Where Mac Miller, you know, Mac Miller, I think, uh, I don't think there's just a whole lot of traffic out there. I mean, to, to some degree there is, but not what we probably thought it would have been, and uh, every time I've been out there, I, I'm one of three or four cars. Now, I'm, I'm sure, you know, when, when the disc golf was out there, I know there was a lot of noise to the back of those neighbors where you used to live, Jen. But I, I, I mean, it'd be kinda nice to put something at Mac Miller that would draw more people out there. And uh, and use the park more.
I agree.
Where it might be a little tighter, and I think it might echo in at Yellow Banks, up and around to all the different people.
Yeah, well, there's enough room where the noise at Yellow Banks probably wouldn't be a.
Big deal.
I mean, I, I've, I did actually uh, go out on the internet, and there are a lot of people that are pissed off about some noise from pickleball courts. Uh, and, and uh, so I, I can, I can relate to that, so I, I don't think that. Yellow Banks would be a problem that way, but it's like, then you're limited, this is all the number of courts you're gonna have. And if you do have a pretty big group come in, then they're gonna end up splitting their groups, I mean, some at some other park. The opportunity to expand at Mac Miller would be.
Well, it's endless, yeah.
Not thinking of taking out some of those um, baseball diamonds out of there to. I thought the, there was talk.
T-ball, eventually, the idea is to move T-ball away from Mac Miller and to Kennedy.
Okay.
Part of that.
What, what is this, the surface here, what is the acreage at, uh, Yellow Banks? Just off, just ETA, ETA, I mean, just to estimate, I mean.
Well, the usual has to be less than an acre.
Yeah, so then, and Mac Miller is forever.
So, south of the current new wellhouse, approximately sixty-seven thousand square feet, that's not part of the pipeline.
Right, right.
So, an acre and a half fish or so, that's, you know, not on the.
Yeah, yeah, considering the Riddow's pipeline.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. Really is, makes the most sense.
And I got a neighbor that you know, that talks about it all the time, and uh, you know, he's, he actually said Kennedy and. But I, I think if people started drawing, you know, traveling out there to Mac Miller, I, it would be a destination point, and I think there's gonna be some growth out there too. So, go ahead.
Just a, I, I realize the agenda item is on the location, but how are we funding this? It's been a while since we've talked about this, so I can't recall, but how is this being paid for?
We do have some set aside in the, in the CIP, but the uh, other piece would be through fundraising.
Okay, we, do we have a plan for the fundraising?
And I think we would give up to the pickleball, and we likely would do some sort of similar MOU that we just did with the Friends of Kennedy.
I think, yeah, I think at Mac Miller, uh, the, the users would have a much greater. Opportunity to raise the money if they aren't raising money for a parking lot in. And a facility and all the rest, I mean, if they're just raising money for courts, it would be.
It'll be less.
Well, much more doable in their eyes, but uh, uh, we really are trying to work with them. Uh, trying to make it happen for them, so, you know, we already have the infrastructure. We just halfway and raised some money for the courts, and I don't think we'd have much of an impact on, on our potential impact on a park budget that is already.
I'll tell you, pickleball and the members, it's bigger than I ever thought, I mean, you, I didn't listen to you, but holy mackerel, it's bigger than I thought.
I think the problem with the Mac, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The problem with Mac Miller is, is too far out of way a little bit, and it's more challenging for people. Out of the area to get to, and that's the most common come from the player. That's the only reason they decided, okay, maybe we should look other places also. So, other than that, the, the land is enough in there, the parking is not enough, we have to increase the parking. We have the shade area, we do need the shade area, we have to do some window screening in there also. So, uh, those are all part of a project. And also for the fundraising, they do have a committee, they already established a committee, and there is a person in there, which. She has done quite a few grant application, and she's willing to help out with that also. So, they are organized, and they have done that in the past for Marathon Park, and I think they can do it for here also. But again, the concern about the uh, Mac Miller Park was, it is just. Difficult to bring when people come from outside, to give them direction to get in. Yellow Bank is pretty easy, you go come out out of a Cam Phillips, straight to it. This one, you gotta go through the, you know, intersection of mess uh. Schofield and and uh. Ross Avenue and Cam Phillips. And then you gotta go to over the bridge. Go to the roundabout. Go farther back. East. So. Those are the common, I heard from the people.
I I think it'd be easy to get to Yellow Banks, but I think once you get there. And especially if people out of the area, I mean, you could really crowd that place up. Where Mac Mac Miller, you can't crowd it up.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, so in indifference to what Steve was suggesting, um. The the reality of people in that survey, and I didn't ask how many people in that survey were actually Weston residents. Uh, for for the uh people in the survey, if they're really not residents. I don't know what I, that really matters to me at that point, you know, I'm more interested in how Weston is going to. Not only fund this, but maintain that and and so. In deference to what's best for the village. I'm still thinking that Mac Miller would be the better choice.
Just real quick here, Michael?
I was just gonna say, as part of when we looked at Mac Miller in the corp, there'd still be a another bathroom facility. Add it to the park, so as you talk about infrastructure. There is still a a new bathroom facility that would be put in at Mac Miller, if that's where the pickleball courts want, so.
And and at and at uh Yellow Banks, you'd have to put one in, right?
We have one with the wellhouse.
With the well, right. All right, okay, yeah, you're right.
But the parking lot's not big enough there.
Right. Yeah, yeah, so it's a trade off of. One or the other.
So, with, yeah.
Belgium Western has a lot of pickleball flair. More than any other place. And. There's two group they play, bunch of them they play at six o'clock in the morning. In downtown YMCA because in the Belgium Western YMCA, there isn't enough room for them. Because they're a large group. And uh, there's a group they play at Belgium Western. YMCA. And this place gets so crowded, it's just annoying practically. But other people coming there too also. So, Weston has, I would say, more than also.
So with this being at forty-eight. Discussion and or action on pickleball courts, would someone wanna? Make a motion to the location, is this, is this the night that we do it?
I'll make a motion to select Mac Miller Park as the location.
Okay, so we have a motion by Cronin to select Mac Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pensinnol. On the discussion. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, so carried. Okay, Mac Miller. All right, uh, forty-nine, discussion and or action on sale of surplus equipment.
Will to declare the attached property surplus and authorize staff to sell and dispose of these items as listed.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pensinnol, second by Jordan, on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried fifty, discussion and or action on purchase of replacement grader.
Will authorize staff to purchase a used grader for the replacement of the two thousand one cat grader for a do not exceed price of three hundred five thousand dollars.
No second.
Uh, motion by Pensinnol, second by Jordan, I I have just real quick, so it's really gonna be like two, what? I mean, because you're gonna trade it in. And if if, yes.
So, so I guess that, so after.
Whole deal following?
No, so after the public works meeting. Last week, we did have a chance to demo a unit that Fabco does have or Fabic has. Um, which their quoted price is the two ninety-seven. And they'd give us fifty-eight thousand for our trade in. So, that uh that option wasn't. Uh, available at the public works meeting. So, if we want to, we can go with that deal and then our net cost is the. Uh, what, two thirty-nine, or we can stick with the three oh five, but I I guess.
Yeah, but then you're you're gonna go shopping.
No, yeah, I mean, that's a good deal.
Yeah, that's a hell of a deal, yeah, that's what I thought, two and local.
Correct.
Yeah, and it's it's not a cat, it's a.
It would be a cat.
Oh, it is a cat, yeah, okay. Wasn't there another one that was a different uh piece?
We also are looking at John Deere.
John Deere, I thought, okay. I I think that's, yeah, and that's what you had in the packet, right?
Well, so I had two options in the.
Three oh five, the three oh five confused me because I thought, why wouldn't we do the trade in right here?
Yeah, so the original motion was for the three oh five.
And does this work the same way if I go buy a car? If I do the trade in, does it take the purchase price off so I get taxed less, or do we get not taxed?
We don't get taxed.
We don't get taxed.
What a deal, can I buy my next car? All right, um, go ahead, okay, go ahead, Jim.
The only reason I went with the the three oh five option is because I didn't know. If there is a different blade or accessories or whichever, can we take these from an O one to it? I just don't wanna cripple you by tying you to a, hey, you can only do the. Whatever that number is, I, the intent was to allow you to utilize your resources in the best interest of the village of Boston to.
Well, we are getting a plate, I thought I read that.
Yeah, so, right, but it, I don't know what stuff we do, there's other widgets you can put on these things, so if our O one widgets don't work with the twenty-one widgets. From seventeen.
Are you okay with the limit with the dollars with the trade in?
If you go with that and we do option A, which falls under the three oh five price, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
You have to withdraw your motion though, because there was a motion and a second.
Yep, uh, just just real quick though, for discussion, go ahead, Jim.
I.
I did it fairly, I did it fairly, Steve, go ahead.
Um, do we own two different graders?
We have two graders, yeah.
How often does this one get used currently?
Uh, for every plow event, both go out. So, um, we used to have seven plow trucks and one grader. And then we um. We switched to two graders and six plow trucks.
Okay, well, the number of equipment hasn't, I guess what I was getting at was, is it something that needs to be replaced or is it something that we could just? Get rid of and and not replace if we did, if we don't have the staff and we don't need it.
Is is it O one?
It's an O one and it's getting to a point where we've got some investments we need to make in it if we think we're gonna keep it around any longer.
And this new one is a seventeen, yeah, that's, whoa, that's huge. And fifty-eight for the other one, yeah, it's got eight thousand hours on it, right, yeah.
When was the purchase?
Uh, I think we bought it new in two thousand, two thousand one.
So, how many hours on?
That older one's eight thousand.
That's got eight thousand.
Yeah. And you you had to calibrate it to the miles, but I I gotta tell you the the um. This equipment does incredible in the cul-de-sacs. And um, who who was the one that just retired that? Everyone thought he went right, but he actually went left through there, um.
Tony?
Tony, yeah. Tony did those cul-de-sacs really nice.
Yeah, and we we switched to the two graders, because with the down pressure, whenever there's any kind of buildup over winter, we can scrape that off, whereas. A plow truck doesn't have a lot of down pressure, so. Uh, we we try to rotate them through the various routes throughout winter to minimize that.
So are we gonna amend? Are we amending?
I think you would withdraw and make the motion.
Okay.
But both the person that made the motion and the second need to withdraw.
Yes.
Oh, I'll withdraw. Second.
Uh, withdrawal by Jordan on a second.
Sure, I'll withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the the motion on the first by Pensinnol and now go back.
So I don't know if that was necessary though, because mine.
We we could have just done the same thing.
Just leave it.
Yes, okay.
Bye.
To please the board, we'll uh move to purchase the used seventeen cat grader from Fabic. For two hundred ninety-seven thousand and trade the existing two thousand one cat grader for fifty-eight thousand for a net cost of two hundred thirty-nine thousand.
Motion by Pensinnol.
Second.
Second by Jordan. Um, I, on the discussion, I just got a, the, it was quite uh comical with the please the board. Normally, you're pretty specific, so I I I thought that that's why I kinda asked them to do that, so. Anyway, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. All right, uh, pickleball surplus equipment, and okay, fifty-one, discussion and or action on Weston Avenue. Alderson to Birch, project A change order number one.
Move to approve change order one for Weston Ave, Alderson to Birch Street, project A construction project that changes. Which changes the substantial completion date to November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, motion by Pensinnol. Second by Ermeling. Uh, on the discussion. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty-two, discussion and or action on Weston Avenue, Alderson to Birch, project B, change order number one.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Pensinnol. On the discussion.
I have, so is this an increase on this one?
This one is, and it's mainly on um Alderson Street, which. Um, so it's a split cost with the Village of Rothschild.
And us, yeah.
And us, yeah.
Okay. Any more? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried fifty-three, two thousand twenty-three audited financial statements.
Motion to approve.
Move, motion to approve by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Zagami, on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried fifty-four, two thousand twenty-four budget amendments.
Move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four budget amendments with the following changes. Will be items in account fifty-five to ten. To fund twenty. Uh, it's more accurately reflect. The utilization of resources for the finance committee.
Okay, motion by Pensinnol.
Second.
Second by Ermeling. On the discussion.
So, can we please explain those changes?
So it's just moving those dollars.
Which, what are we, what are we looking at?
Uh, the top five lines.
Okay.
Um, so those parks dollar, that was an actual parks expense for the. Playground equipment. To the playground equipment line, not to. Or or to where the funding for the playground equipment. From ARPA where it came from, not. U utilizing general fund dollars for or whichever fund this came out of. Parks dollars, right?
So, right now, when the village staff were working on the playground equipment, getting the land ready and doing all the prep work. Um, they quoted it to the Parks Department, General Operations, so the Finance Committee, HR, recommended that we actually move the. The wages and benefits to fund twenty where the equipment is expensed. So it more reflective of the total cost of the project.
Okay, so you're in favor of this, okay.
Kind of her idea.
I was gonna say it.
Well, when you, when you said with the following changes, I presumed that you were making.
Oh, no, no, this is, yeah, no, this is just a conversation.
Jim, just be saying.
Well, we have finance meeting.
Okay, I I wasn't here for that, so you're gonna forgive me.
So, uh, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried fifty-five, discussion and on municipal. Discussion on municipal center polling place. I think it's great, so it stays right here. That's my discussion, go ahead.
I I asked for this to be put on just because I know there was some ideas floating around and that, um. So. One of the thoughts I had, there would, we had a very long line here. I don't know if anybody drove by at like between six and eight o'clock that night, but it was very long and it was outside, so. I wanted to try to find some ways that we could mitigate that, whether it's getting them inside here. Or do we need to split this up into two locations instead of one, the park, I also had a number of people who. Commented and said that the parking was kind of a nightmare here that day, which truthfully, in driving through, I feel like we did a. And I I understand I'm not trying to beat anybody up here by saying what I'm saying, but I I think we can do better as far as that goes, whether. Whether it's installing a parking lot where that. Grass field is right now in our back area so that we have more parking for people. Or um, or we split it up to two locations, or we change the traffic flow or something, but. I figured it would be a good idea to get this on here and talk about it. Um, right now, while it's still fresh in everybody's minds, and I don't know if Pam has any. Has any thoughts, she'd like to.
Can I go first? So I um, I I I did a lot of talking, a lot of calls. But I I didn't hear any calls at all about a little bit on parking, especially in the beginning of the day. And I think we we just got our foot wet and we got going, I I was by here five, six, probably ten times. Actually drove through several times to thank everybody, and I think they thought I was nuts, they wanted me to get the hell out of there. You know, if you're not parking, leave, leave, you know, so it was kind of funny, but I just felt like I had to thank everybody. And uh, and the only comment I got was that I was standing outside. Nobody really said that they had to wait too long, I think they actually expect when ninety-three percent uh, you know, turnout, it's phenomenal. Probably never happen again, probably not, maybe it will. But I think if we just do a little bit more Disney. Inside our building. And you know, it's kind of like going to to the TSA and you know, if you're there in early in the morning, the the rope line just goes straight through and then you're going and you're getting checked and. Shoes on, shoes off. Uh, this can be the same way until it starts getting busier, then you just kinda open up another way and open up another one and open another one. I think a little investment in something like that, those, whatever we use to corral, if it's rope, whatever. I think, I think it'd be, yeah, it'd be, I think it'd be a a great idea, and you know what, then they get to see a little bit more of our building too, which is theirs, they paid for it. Or they are paying for it. So, that's just my thought, I think if we if we split up. The equipment and staff, I think that's a hardship, and we've done that in the past. And I just remember previous clerks screaming and hollering and running around and getting the equipment. And it's just a lot, it's really hard for everybody to do that, I I just was here when it happened, but I I totally agree with some of the comments that we heard, yeah.
And and I'm fine, and I'm fine with keeping it in one place, but I I want, I did talk, I talked to Pam about it too, but I do think we need to reverse. The way the parking is moving in and out, and the reason being is ninety percent of the traffic is coming from the south. So what's happening is they're coming in, they're entering right here, and then they have to cut back across the line waiting to get in.
That's a good thought.
So they need to come in through this drive and exit on the north end. So.
Michael?
Yeah, I guess the the reason we made them come in this way is. Um, the first election we had here. The biggest observation was as people were coming in. Anyone dropping off somebody at the front of the building or trying to get into the handicap parking stall. Um, it it was bogging up, like there are thirty open stalls here, but we had cars backed up to Ross Ave. Because everybody was trying to get into that entrance. Um, so I, I think maybe we could look at, I don't know if there's another way we could exit onto Ross Ave if we. Um, extend a parking lot on the south side there, we can maybe rotate people through that way. Um, but the goal was if they come in this way, they pass all the open stalls and they can pull in instead of getting stuck right there, because. Everybody's moving in one direction.
Yeah, and and you're right, getting into the handicap spots, it's tedious for for people driving, you know, like that, so. The yellow jackets did a super job. I mean, they were taking the cars right to the spots.
As a person standing in the rain for about four hours on that Tuesday. Um. Really, it wasn't until I think maybe four, four thirty. When, like, usually somebody came, they parked their car and within fifteen minutes, they were back in their car and out leaving the parking lot. But then it started getting to the point where somebody came and they parked and it was. An hour plus, and I think Pam, that's when you said there's, I don't know, how many hundred of new registered voters?
It was seven hundred and forty-six.
In one day, one day.
The last sixty people, out of the last sixty people, only seven. Were check-ins, the rest were registrations.
Wow.
There was just a lot of people.
Yeah.
And. Where. There's more parts to this when you move around, I had fifteen people upstairs, fifteen people downstairs. Thirty altogether, I didn't have it really anybody else to grab from for election inspectors. Grab from for election inspectors, if we would have moved people faster through the line and there, they would have bottlenecked in here. Because there, we only had two ballot boxes, although we could have, we could rent one from the. The county and get a third one down here, cause I had three upstairs. Um, but it just would have bottlenecked elsewhere too.
Yeah.
It just was a lot of registrations and registrations take more time. We have to look them up to see if they're felons, we have to look them up to see if they're adjudicated incompetent. And then we gotta put all their data in the computer or in the Badger Books, it's not a computer, but. Um, so it, it was just a very busy day. A very successfully busy day, cause we had a lot of people.
It was.
It was great.
And Pam and I did have a, like a after a hot wash with the chief about the. Vehicle movement, and so we will. We, we will meet about that beforehand next time and, and have a flow and a, and a plan both for the officers and for our staff to. Coordinate better through that process.
I actually think coming in on this backside is better, even though. Oh, no, people are coming that way, just because like you said, the parking.
But, but then to shoot across, that's a, that's a stinker, to come out here when there's a, I mean, I saw it many, uh, three or four times, there was already to the lights. And they were standing.
And that's the problem, you had people here waiting, and they were backed up all the way down there, people waiting to get through and then what do you do?
Yeah, and that's where trying to, yeah, have, have an officer to help traffic.
Well, I thought that the car in the, in the entrance there made a lot of sense, so nobody could even try. You know, so I thought that made sense, Joe?
Yeah, so it was a. Pretty interesting when you look at the data that, that you do, that you, uh, showed us Pam, eighty-six percent turnout. But yet only thirty-three hundred were so in person, is that not right?
The, the rest were in-person absentee, so absentee ballots were fifty-one hundred.
Yeah, and that's, that's what, what I did, you know?
As the two weeks prior or.
That's what I.
So, so, so we're talking about, uh. Only thirty, you know, when I say only, only thirty-three hundred people, but the reality then of seven hundred and fifty were. Newly registered, now you're talking about twenty-five percent of the people that you had come in here. Caused you a significant amount of extra work. So I, I don't think that without that, without this election, that it's likely that you're gonna witness that same thing. But it certainly is an opportunity now to recognize what happens when you really do have a, a big event and plan accordingly. I, I'm probably not in favor of splitting it either, I think that it would be great if we could have it here. It's just a matter of trying to figure out how to, how to do that.
I don't know how this ad hallway beat enough to put a couple.
Oh, I'm, you, you know, you could run about into the garage a little bit, you know, one or two.
Actually.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I, I had a, a gentleman from the state come in, cause that's what we were originally gonna do, was have it out in the shop. Area, the garage area, and he highly recommended that we do not because of security, he said there's too many places for people to hide. If there was anybody gonna do anything bad.
Hide in what, sleep? Eat?
No, not do something. They got bad intentions.
Okay.
That was just his suggestion.
But if, if you've got, if you've got monitors out there that are keeping, making sure that people stay in line.
We could do that, yep.
Yeah, but, and we have any monitors in the line that was there.
We just had one, we didn't.
We had one I heard, and I, I, I heard he was incredible, yeah. So yeah, you'd probably need a few more, and you don't want to waste the people that are here volunteering, yeah, Jim?
We have, I don't know, what are these hallways, ten feet wide, twelve feet wide, like you, you can.
Yeah, we probably could.
You, you can down and back this.
You could do a three, you could down, back and back, I mean, the TSA lines are.
Of the weather, yep, you could do that, keep them on the weather.
I'm pretty sure we probably got some cones or some something back there that's orange that.
Mm-hmm.
If it directs cars, it'll direct.
Yeah.
Cattle.
Or just ropes, yeah.
I think if we, if we did do that in the hallway and we just said to make two lines, I think people would, like, we could do one registration and one check-in. People would follow that, they were at the, like, around, I think it was like six o'clock or so, we started. To just split it and we moved the, the, the line markers that we had in there. And we made, we, we had everybody that was at the Badger Books doing registration. So we could move it faster, cause we had a couple of, um, poll workers who can't do registration. Um, weren't trained or rather would not, so we just made sure that. Everybody at the Badger Books at that time was registration, so we could move everybody through faster.
Okay. You know, it's, um. You know, watching the news, watching TV, I mean, there was lines all over the country. I mean, in, in heavy rain and horrible weather and umbrellas, the entire line full. So, yeah. Okay, I, yeah, I think we should probably keep, you know, fine tuning and discussing and think of different ways and. We'll figure it out, so, okay? Discussion only. Uh, let's see, attorney referrals?
We have to go back to forty-five.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, let's go back to forty-five.
Like he just texted me.
That's fine, so forty-five, discussion of expanding East Nick Avenue, we have a meeting this Thursday with, uh, quite a few, uh, four municipalities. Uh, yep, at nine o'clock, isn't it, ten o'clock?
At nine o'clock, and we'll, we'll host that here at the municipal center and then I think, well, we will know more.
Okay.
Is there anything else, or is that the only update really at this point?
I, that, I think that meeting will probably be. It would be better, a better update will be provided after that meeting, just because we'll have all four municipalities. We did have a lot of contact with Corona Water, they did express that this might not be. The right time for them, they have some other projects that they need to focus on. Um, but I think when we have the conversation with all four, we'll be able to provide a better update. And Michael has, wants to add.
I was just gonna, I, I think at this point, the biggest ask is who, who's paying for what, and I, I guess that's. An answer, I, I don't think, necessarily know if staff is able to say. To this or the village can commit to that, like.
Well, I think we gotta go into the past history, you know, we gotta look at, uh. Uh, uh, several projects, small and big, on who paid for what. And I, I think some of the answers I'm getting back are the developers are paying for it, you know, so. Um, I, I don't know what else would happen out there right away, but, um. Yeah.
And I think as part of that, to what, to what extent, I mean. I don't know, I don't know that that road needs to be built as a paved asphalt road, at least not initially. And if that means that it's gravel for five to ten years and then. It gets worked in as a budget item to pave it or something like that, when the money is a little bit more. Available, then maybe that's something that we need to look at, instead of. Instead of saying right out of the gate, this has gotta be paved, I mean, especially with all that heavy truck traffic that's gonna be on for the first few years. We're gonna pave a road and it's gonna be destroyed.
Well, I, I, I think we gotta do some due diligence, uh, to. You know, not protect, but I mean, you know, like the arts, you know, with that place back there, uh, you know, back by, uh. Um, uh, the Holiday Inn and, and the, uh, Asian, uh, restaurant and stuff. You know, they put, put that whole development in by Renaissance, you know, and then, uh, John Tappy put a huge development, I'd just like to. Revisit some of those things and see what happened to each one of those, uh, right now, um, you've got Heath Tappy. Putting in that whole development, uh, off of Birch, who put those roads in?
They, they needed.
Yep, who put the sidewalk curb, everything in?
He did.
He did, yep, so I, I mean. I think that's really what we have to look at, and, and boy, is he putting stuff on there fast, I mean, that's gonna be full in a year and a half, two years. Where this won't be full, we're putting a road out there and. I personally think that road should be punched through for safety reasons, uh, there's four houses on the corner water side that. I, I, that's gonna be something else if something ever happens out there, uh, the road is really rough, tough, but, um. I, uh, but I look back at these other ones and. I would expect a lot of residents, a lot of projects to come back and say, what the heck, you, you do it this way, but not this way, so, anyway.
I don't necessarily know if that's apples to apples though.
Oh, it's apples to apples.
No, hang on a second, because, cause he's, he's subdivision, there was already. Uh, Birch Street that ran through there, it got, it got them close, I'm not, I don't think Gary's asking anybody to put roads into his development. I think he, he's more worried about Nick Ave, which is strictly from just an access point. So, if you look at it from that standpoint. Who put Birch Street in, was that us or was that the development? The developers who developed those neighborhoods out there, I don't know. I get what you're saying about Heath.
Well, okay, so Heath, Heath wants to put all those homes in there, we would have built Birch Street?
Birch Street already existed.
Uh, yes.
That's what I'm saying, so how did Birch Street get there initially?
Doesn't exist.
How did they get there initially, who built it and paid for it?
Built by the county.
Highway access, that's what I'm getting at.
It was County X at one time.
It was County X.
But Nicky Avenue, you know, the need right now is, is one developer. Nobody else.
And public safety and for everybody else.
Public safety, but I mean, we could redo the rule as it sits right now. Yeah, for public safety with a, a larger cul-de-sac. Or just a, a, just a turn, a Y-turn, you could easily do. So. And then we, we would have to demand that Corner Water helps, because it's, it's, it's their safety that we have to protect. So, so somebody comes in right now on the north side of Nick. Okay, in, in the Village of Weston, right, yeah. And they come in with a, a house they wanna build, now what happens?
Well, they don't give a.
North side?
Yeah, the north side, our side.
They'll get a building permit?
They would.
For one.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So ten people come in and want houses all the way down to the cul-de-sac, we'd put it in? We'd say yes, we couldn't say no?
I don't think there's ten lots down there, that, those are large tracts of land.
I know they're large tracts, I know, yeah. But somebody subdivides in five acres, you know, so, I mean, you could easily, I mean, I drove for a long time to get to that cul-de-sac, I didn't think I was gonna make it. Um. I just, but we would have to say yes.
If there's a road there.
Yeah.
But if there isn't a road, they wouldn't. The subdivision would require a zoning change, and the zoning change you could say no to, so.
But individual homes, which is what Corner Water is approving. You know, with, kind of not telling us, you know.
They turned down, I don't remember what year it was, but when Grochek was gonna do. The big golf course.
Yeah, the golf course, they turned that down, yep. Yep.
They, cause Randy came to meetings, cause they needed assistance from us to turn that down.
Okay. Well, let's, we just, we discussed.
How many homes are there that are down there right now that, uh, Corner Water is responsible for fire coverage on, Chief?
There's four.
Four?
There's four? I would say there's four.
There's four, if not five, but I counted four when I was down there Friday. Now, that's, that's not, the rest of the land, uh, so Kamitschik. Uh, goes in and then turns, and then turns, and then turns, and then turns. Is that Kamitschik all the way to Nick? Yes. All the nineties, okay, so we're responsible for all of Kamitschik. All the way down, and then we, the, the first home that went on Corner Water's side, they brought the power from the corner, the last corner. All the way down, they had to pay for all that power, and then as more people are getting on, then they have to pay that, they get a credit back. Is what I understand, so. Hmm. And there's two very large homes back there, very large, yeah, Chief?
But from the last home in Weston all the way to the end, it's probably another mile and a half.
Oh, it's a long way, yeah. The last one is.
Houses in Weston are easy to get to because there's some farmland to turn around, the driveways, it's when you get. Past that and start going back south, it's.
That last corner is, that's a stinker, and that, and the last one that built is. A nephew of the Grochek, right? And, and I talked to him with Keith and Scott Tetro, and he said there's several family members that are planning on building out there. On their grandfather's land, but I, and Corner Water have to say yes? If they wanted to?
I'm not familiar with Corner Water zoning, but it probably says. One house, one single family house per lot, and until they were divided, if it's one lot, they could be allowed one house.
Okay. Okay. Well, more to follow on Thursday. Um, okay, anymore? No more? Attorney referrals, I don't believe so. Uh, administrator referrals, anything? No? Remarks from trustees, Jim?
Uh, just wanted to thank everybody for a good job on the election, I thought, yes, we had lines, yes, we have bottom marks, but I think it went really, really well, um. To everyone involved, thank you.
Uh, Joe?
Yeah, I got a second, Jim, on, on that, I thought. I thought you guys did a great job.
Okay, Steve?
Same thing, great job on the election, end up, happy Thanksgiving, since that's already next week.
Yeah. Uh, Shane?
Um, a couple of things. Election was great, you always doing a great job, it's just given this, but that way. And it's a lot of headache, uh, Sean, uh, in your report, you said, uh, you had to replace the water heater.
Yep.
What was wrong with it?
So there's a inter, there's a, a leak either in the condensing system or in the tank. And we couldn't inflate it, but both items are warrantyable, so when the service tech from. The provider was up here, he took a look at it, video and pictures of the leak. Um, but because it's inside it, insulated cover, and if you pull the cover off, all the inflation would come out. Um, he said it's warrantyable. So they sent a new water heater and it arrived on Friday. So it's sitting here.
So has something to do with water quality or not at all?
Um, we may want to take a look at the animal rod before we reinstall the new one. Before we install the new one, because we know with the, our water has been. Corrosive.
Yes.
Um, so it is a gas water heater, um, it's stainless steel, and I did take pictures of the water side and the. And the heat side, the flame side, those were required for the warranty, um, so. I can send them to you if you wanna take a look at them. Um, because you can definitely see corrosion on stainless steel tubes that run through the water side.
These are water quality, have, is that, that, what's the cost of it, ten thousand?
At least, yeah, when we had it replaced, it was just under fourteen thousand with labor.
Correct.
But warranty?
It, yes, except for the labor.
Okay.
So, yes, they did warranty, it's five years old, it was.
What kind of time are we talking, uh, that that was in use?
Uh, two thousand nineteen. So five years, but three months a year. So literally fifteen months of actual runtime.
Okay, and I just, I'm, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just, I have some stuff, but I'm gonna jump on that, I, I think we ought to check with, uh, Lockery. With, um, uh, the car wash. And, uh, I, I think we gotta dig in and, and help, let them tell us what the difference is with the. Repairing the parts from the Wassa location and our Weston location. Because we've heard this in the past, that they've got some real problems there, and I, I have not heard nothing unless it's just gone to staff. But I, I heard it for a while, pretty hot and heavy, and you had to replace a lot of equipment there, and then, then it just died. Are you, are, are we hearing stuff at staff?
I haven't heard anything probably in. A year, nine months, something like that, I think this past summer.
They were closed for several days, putting in a whole bunch of new stuff, but I'd, I'd like to know the difference from the one on Wassa is a year behind, right? I thought on the build, so if that's a year behind the Wassa, what kind of repairs Wassa's had against Weston?
Well, I've, I've also been talking to contractors just in general, because, because of the clock center, we deal with so much stainless steel.
Right.
Stainless steel, the quality of it has gone downhill. I mean, we had our place structure redone in two thousand twenty-one, and all the stainless steels corroded already. I mean, and it's. You have stainless steel that's spent there since nineteen ninety-nine and it's fine, but you have stuff from two thousand twenty-one and you can already see rust staining on it. It's just the quality of materials that we're seeing these days, I just talked to a contractor, specialty contractor, I was at the pool on Friday. And I, I'm like, what is going on, like, we're changing out. Concrete anchors in the pool, Travis helped us last year, or the spring, like, and they're just like rusting away. And we had the original anchors in there for twenty years, and all of a sudden now we're replacing the anchors every year. So it's just the quality of the materials, and I've talked to several contractors, it's just quality materials that you're seeing from twenty-five years ago to today.
There, there might be some hysterical, historical data, excuse me, from some of the plumbers in our area, you know, the best one, uh. P G A, they might have some historical data on, on regions, or maybe they could, you know, capture that data from different municipalities and see to them.
And they, and they do know specifically like the animal rod that I'm talking about in the water heater. They know specific what works for our area better than the others.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I've been in my house twenty-two years, I've replaced my water heater twice already.
Okay.
You know, so ten, eleven years per, um, it's gas. Electric has a little bit different, um, but it is literally the type of animal rod you get in there that collects the metals and the materials inside the. That's in the water.
Okay.
Thank you.
City of Wassa has a basically, uh, water treatment.
Mm-hmm.
So they shouldn't have that problem with the water, but I don't know about.
Yeah.
The only thing I have is, uh. My, my, what the math motherfucker said, no, please?
Oh, okay, you said no?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear you say no.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, you didn't say anything, okay.
I was gonna say.
He, I was, I was expecting him, I was expecting Hussein to say no, um, but I didn't hear nothing, and he didn't vote at all. But he wants to just make sure that he's reflected as a no, okay?
You got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing.
So I, I've got, uh.
Elections.
Yeah. Uh, the leaves, I, I just, I, I mean. Today they were in our, my neighborhood again, unbelievable service, phenomenal. And I'm sure we've got trucks running around just trying to see where the piles still are.
Uh, today, yeah, today was our last.
Probably our last, yeah, but, but it's, it's easily the fourth time, or the fifth, that they've been in our area.
Could have only been the second.
Hmm, no, that's not true. Because I, I know they picked mine up, but which a couple of us neighbors all get together, and I sit right in my front, I have a little office in the front, so I get to see everything. And then they went by on a really dry day, and, uh, I thought they had a fire in the container. Because the smoke and, and dust was coming out, like, I, I couldn't believe it, I honestly thought it was on fire. But it made it around.
We did have a fire one day, actually.
In my area?
I forget where the truck was, it might have been the first round through your area.
This was dust, brown dust that went easily a full block down, I couldn't believe it, I'm sure they were just full, you know, it was blowing out the dust that it was creating. Uh, then today, I've, I actually seen it four times in our neighborhood. So I, and it's because my neighbors throw all these piles out whenever the heck they think. And they keep asking me, you know, if I do it one more time, will they come by, I said, I don't know, I think two is, is the limit. And I think two should be the limit.
You were, you were working ahead, we, we, we did work ahead initially.
But we're the last, we're on the L, so we're the last one to get picked up, I think four times is a lot, I, I just do, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll run the GPS right now and see how many times the trucks went past your house.
Well, if I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I, hallucinating and I shouldn't be drinking that early, so.
Well, they pick you when it's.
I, I also, yeah, I also wanna say, uh, incredible job on the election, I, uh, it was, I, I was worried. And I drove by a lot, a lot of phone calls, uh, Steve and I talked actually quite a bit right up to eight o'clock. And, uh, but I thought we did a pretty decent job, I think there's some little fine tuning, but it's just so weird to see people excited about the election. In years past, we, we never saw that, and between you two specifically, you guys actually enjoy the election, and it's. Pretty neat to see that, and you guys like to talk about it, and, and I mean, it's, it's a huge deal, it's, it's. It's, um, what, your quote when we first hired you, I remember you saying this to me, cause I asked you specifically, why? Is that, and you said something that I usually can remember, but it's something about going to the election with your mom and dad.
Yes.
Would say the, say the whole thing.